Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 13th meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We will call the meeting to order and we do have a quorum present. Our first item of business will be to approve the minutes of the September 15th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Everybody had a chance to read those ahead of time? Any additions or corrections? And if not, we'll need a motion.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion and many seconds. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next, we will have our public hearings and recommendations to the City Council. And we have, looks like about nine of those tonight. And we do have a big crowd out here tonight, but I think some of them are not here necessarily to speak to us at any of our public hearings. I hear there's a group from Leadership Rutherford. So if you're here from Leadership Rutherford, wave at us all up here. Oh, wow. Wow.
No signatures till the end. Don't even ask.
Rick, I told them, I told them that too.
Anyone else might? Don't come this way.
I don't know how they put this.
If he practically says so.
We usually see them on the nights when we have one or two public hearings, not nine.
Didn't choose wisely tonight.
Didn't tell them about that. But welcome, we're glad y'all are here. Glad to have you.
They're all out there, oh, come on.
Okay. Onto our business. Public hearings, recommendations to City Council. The first item is a zoning application for approximately 8.4 acres located along Bridge Avenue to be rezoned from RS 10 to CF and approximately one acre to be rezoned from Heavy Industrial to CF. City Church is the applicant. Good evening, Ms. Smith.
Good evening, Chair, Planning Commission, and public. This particular item before you is a bulk rezone request for three different parcels that are currently known as 815, 821, and 831, Bridge Avenue on the south side of Bridge Street, basically south of the Main Street dead end and east-west of the New Salem Highway area. This particular application comes in from City Church, and the reason why they're asking for a bulk rezone is they do want to ultimately locate their church at this particular area, but would like to have a CF zone district, which does conform to our general plan designation of a general commercial district for their property, which will help with their financing for the project, rather than going through the BZA with a separate approval there, which you would normally see for most churches. This particular property actually involves 9.41 acres, and of those acres, there is a portion, small portion, that is zoned HI, shown there in the southerly portion of their property. The rest of it is existing RS 10 zone districts. Surrounding them, we have RS 10 to the due west of them, we have predominantly industrial to the south, and then recently, the council just approved this piece adjacent to their easterly border for PND for our new transit center facility that you may recall from a couple of months ago. With that, staff had taken a look and is generally supportive of this bulk rezone because it is generally compatible with the general commercial land use designation. Actually, many of the designations for a CF zone are similar to that higher classification, and due to the adjacent residential uses, it's a more appropriate transition zone for that particular piece. So with that, we would ask that you conduct a public hearing and formulate a recommendation for the council. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them, and I'm not sure if a representative from City Church is in the audience, should you have any other questions of them as well.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any questions for Ms. Smith or representative from the church? All right. We will begin tonight, as with all of the public hearings. If you would like to speak at any of the public hearings, you will come forward to the podium and state your name and address. You will be allowed three minutes to make any comments you have to make regarding the item in question, and then please make all of your comments to the Planning Commission directly, not to other members of the audience and/or the developers or representatives. So with that, we will open the public hearing for this first item and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak regarding the zoning application. Anybody on this one? We will close the public hearing, ask for comments or questions from the Planning Commission.
If no comments, I'll make a motion we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Item B will be an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 15.6 acres located north of Dejarnet Lane. Calvary Baptist Church is the applicant. Ms. Smith?
Good evening again. This particular item, annexation, is currently owned by Calvary Baptist Church. Those of you who may be familiar, there is the existing Calvary Baptist Church site at the front parcel inside the city limits along Dejarnet Lane, and the one directly in back of them that is surrounded on three sides by city limits is the property in question. This particular one is actually being run concurrently with a zoning application for the PCA sports fields. That involves a portion of this site that's proposed for annexation, as well as a portion of the adjacent parcel. This particular applicant is accessed off of Walton Lane is the current access to an actual city right-of-way for the piece currently, and then in the future, may have some other opportunities towards Armand Street. In this particular area, we did a plan of services, that plan of services for all of the various city departments showed no negative impacts as far as providing services day one, if an annexation were to be approved for this particular site. And this particular map, I think, shows best the intent with the concurrent zoning, that the green section of that annexation piece just come in as allowed by the city code, which would be an interim RS 15. The red area portion of that same parcel would be part of that PND zoning application concurrent with the project, and then later with that zoning is the blue piece, which is a separate parcel inside the city limits. But this visually allows you to better understand where those pieces and parcels are. Surrounding the site currently, it is all vacant land. On the annexation parcel, I'm just now looking, ah, here we go. Here is the annexation parcel, the church is to the south, the annexation piece is currently vacant land, and then there's single-family residential surrounding the north and the west sides, and again, vacant land in the county to the opposite east side. Police protection, as we, shown, would be in police zone three. They do show that they would be able to provide services to that site. As far as fire services, the nearest station, Fire Station 6, is 1.4 miles away, and then also Fire Station 8 is 1.7 miles away roughly. Existing services, there are existing sewer water, electric services adjacent to the site through the end of Walton Lane, as well as at Dejarnet. And then city schools do show if any of the pieces were to develop, that it would potentially provide 18 single-family homes in that unzoned area. That would only impact those schools by three to six elementary school students, which it appears that they do have some capacity at that school to provide. And then as far as other streets, Dejarnet does show a current level of service of B in it, and with future development in the area would be level of service C to that particular area. And then water, again, would be provided by City of Waters, and you can see on this particular map, the water in the sewer that actually touches onto that parcel for the annexation. Drainage, you can also see from this point, and we did have a small discussion previously, there is a low point on the site, and about this area here in the center that bifurcates the two parcels is the low point. So those are some areas that they would address with any future development. And then lastly, floodway, you can see is off of the property site and does not impact the site itself. So based on those pieces of information, it does not look like the city would have difficulties in providing services, as identified in this plan of services, and we ask that Planning Commission conduct a public hearing and discuss the matter and formulate a recommendation to council. And after this item, we will go into the zoning that is the companion with this particular property annexation.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Smith.
Madam Chair, just for the, just for the public's awareness, there'll be two public hearings, one for the annexation and one for the zoning. This first public hearing will only be for the annexation of this parcel.
Thank you. So, that being said, as Mr. Blomley says, if you would like to speak regarding the annexation of the property, the next public hearing will be regarding the zoning of the property. So we will now open the public hearing regarding annexation of this. If you'd like to speak on the annexation, please come forward to the podium.
I live on Templeton Lane. I've owned a home there since 1994. I have a problem with the change in this. This is an area that has sandwiched this subdivision between the airport, the schools, Oakland and high school and middle school, as well as the ballfields at McKnight and Starplex. The traffic along this road has become unbearable ever since the school was built. It's quicker to get through the school zones at the middle school and the high school at Oakland than it is to get through this school zone. It backs traffic all the way up to Memorial. There's also traffic for the ballfields at the Starplex and McKnight, that's ongoing. So you'll have traffic in the morning, and in the afternoon, and then further traffic for any athletic events that the school will have. I'm standing in opposition to this. The other issue I have with is light pollution and noise pollution. So I consider that this is really out of bounds and unfair to the property owners already in place.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Anybody else like to speak on the annexation of this property? Okay. We'll close the public hearing and ask for comments and questions from the Planning And if there's no comments or questions, we'll be ready for a motion.
Not yet, thank you. I didn't, I raised my hand, I don't sound back here. Will you close this session?
On the annexation?
You know, the public comment?
Do the annexation or the zoning?
The annexation. I don't know.
I've never reopened a public hearing.
If we're strictly going to follow the rules, once the public hearing is closed, then it can only be reopened by motion and majority vote of the council to, or the commission to reopen.
There will be another public hearing about this same issue here in just a minute. Just the zoning, not the annexation.
Another day?
And you get to, I mean, you don't have to raise your hand.
No, just in a few minutes.
Anybody that wants to speak on any of these public hearings, you just get up and come to the podium when you're ready to speak, okay? Thank you. So we're gonna vote on the annexation, or we're gonna, somebody's gonna make a motion, I take it.
I'll make a motion that we approve the annexation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now we'll have the zoning on the, application on the same item. It will be a zoning application for approximately 9.5 acres located north of Dejarnet Lane to be rezoned from RS 15 to PND, and that is the Providence Christian Academy Athletic Facility PND, and approximately 9.7 acres to be zoned PND simultaneous with annexation. Providence Christian Academy is the applicant. Ms. Smith?
Good evening, Commission. This particular parcel is the companion rezone with the annexation. Starting out in the zone map, you can kind of clearly see here, half of the project area that's anticipated for the proposed zone change is in outside the city limits. The other half is actually roughly within the city limits. And as you can see from this particular map, city zoning, or city areas surround basically three sides of the site. And of course, the annexation involved this leftover piece here as well, and all of that is single-family residential, and then county is just on the one easterly side of the project site, and its various forms of residential zoning in that area. The general plan designation for that area is designated as suburban residential, and a suburban residential doesn't specifically lay out that a public facility would be allowed, but generally, in most of our zoning planned institutional developments, usually do get approved through either the BZA or another process, because you don't know where those institutional type uses may go when you're originally laying out your zone districts or your general plans. But in, again, most cases, they would be permitted by right through a special use permit in a residential zone district. One of the things that I think I left out of my report, but we did mention last time, is there was a neighborhood meeting on this particular project back on 8:30 at the PCA campus, and the concerns that were brought up, I believe, were drainage, traffic on Walton, lighting regarding the evening hours, and student crossing of Dejarnet and future buildout of the PCA facilities. You may recall, when we had our initial packet for this, it showed parking on the south side of Dejarnet to serve the sports fields, but as staff talked to the applicant, we felt that all required parking for the sports fields would need to be provided on the northerly side of Dejarnet. So one of the things that the applicant will be presenting to you is this updated phasing map that actually breaks down phase by phase what they're proposing to build with the parking that goes with that. So in looking at these particular numbers, what they are proposing now is 606 parking spaces on the north side of Dejarnet, and that includes some spaces on the existing Calvary Baptist Church site. However, those parking spots that are there are not necessarily needed until phase four, when they have their planned 1,600-seat stadium. And this is anticipated to be potentially a 10-year buildout, but they wanted to show the community what was going to be laid out in what locations, so that they could take a look at all of those things in concert. As you may have noticed in the staff report, what we had included was three department recommendations that staff did not feel that we had reached agreement on. So if you look at page six of the staff report, the first one being a traffic analysis, as we were looking at the project, really only the football stadium portion of the site was the biggest traffic generator that we had anticipated. All of the prior phases, one, two, and three, the tennis courts, a baseball field, and a softball field, were anticipated to have less of an impact because they didn't have, one, as many seats, and, two, that now we were looking at all the parking being provided on the north side of Dejarnet. In looking at those issues, the other thing that we had gotten some agreement on with the applicant, which really was one of the main focuses for the need for a traffic analysis, was if you have somebody coming down Dejarnet eastbound and taking a left-hand turn into this particular drive approach here, we wanted to make sure that there was enough room in the queuing lane to get people off of Dejarnet and into the site. So the applicant has agreed to a three-lane-wide entry at this point for at least 250 feet back into the site. So that basically gets it off of our site and onto their site. We don't care if they have a problem on their site, as long as it doesn't cause a problem on the Dejarnet site. So we have agreed that a traffic analysis should be required with the site plan review with phase four, and it really provides best opportunities for the city so that if there are any other items of concern between the two campuses, it can be better addressed, especially as it comes to pedestrians that currently cross every afternoon after school is out currently. The second recommendation talked about roadway connections back to Armand Street, and as you'll see here in the updated phasing plan, this red dash line shows the capability of tying back to Armand Street. You know that we always look at roadway connections and additional points of egress and ingress into a site, and then we also wanted to make sure that they had future access where they might be able to get maybe some other access points on the easterly side of the site. So we believe that item B has now been taken care of. Item C, where it talks about the driveway on Dejarnet we just talked about, because we have gotten the three lanes for 250 feet, we believe item C has now been addressed. And then item D talks about clearly depicting all required parking spaces. This particular plan, as I stated, now breaks it out per phase, and we show per phase, there is adequate parking for each phase as a standalone on their site for phases one, two, and three. Only phase four do they need the parking adjacent, which they propose to have a parking agreement with the adjacent property owner to use that parking, and we anticipate that the normal times of a football game would not conflict with the primary times that the church would be utilizing their parking lot. And then lastly, architectural elevations. The applicant will be sharing some updated architectural elevations this evening, which we think have started to make some headway, but we would like to continue to work on more specific architectural drawings, anything that's more than 5,000 square feet. We would require an architect prepare those architectural drawings, but we would like to go ahead and continue to work on that with their site plan review to determine the final design. And because that phase one does have improvements in the city right-of-way, that site plan review would come back to this body if it were so approved. So with that, staff has noticed this as a scheduled public hearing, and we would ask that you go ahead and take that public hearing, discuss the matter, and then formulate a recommendation for our city council. And with that, I will ask Matt Taylor, the applicant's engineer, to come up and present their project.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, Chair Lady Jones, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Matt Taylor of SEC. I've also got Ms. Tara James from Providence Christian Academy with me tonight, representing them. And so we do have a brief presentation to introduce to you the proposed PND to allow for PCA's athletic facility, as Ms. Smith has indicated. As PCA has grown over the past decade, they've started to add different sports to complete the students' experience at their school, and with that, they've realized they need a home for all of the athletic programs, and think that this location would be perfect for that. It's directly across the street from the school, and would let them have a home that's not spread across the city. Currently, they go to Old Fort for their tennis, they go up to Sportscom for their baseball, and so we think that this location and plan would achieve all those goals. The site, as Ms. Smith says, is about a 19-acre site. It's to the north of Dejarnet Lane, which is shown kind of in a purple color here. It's directly behind the existing Calvary Baptist Church, shown in yellow in the north-south is Alexander Boulevard, and then in red, in the east-west direction, is Walton. And then this also shows the PCA existing school highlighted in blue, kind of to the bottom left of this particular picture. As Ms. Smith indicated, this site is currently zoned a mixture of RS 15 in the city of Murfreesboro and RM inside of Rutherford County. The site today is mostly farmland. I think it's in soybeans. We do have good access to all utilities, water and sewers to the south, as well as inside of Walton. Both of those are Murfreesboro Water Resources. This is the existing church itself, the school across the street. This would be the general area that the site would be constructed. This is at the end of Walton, looking to the north, the same spot looking to the south, and this is at the end of Ormond, which is to the north and east of the project location. So the project itself is laid out to basically have four distinct areas that would house six or seven different athletic programs. So in the northeast, or the bottom right-hand corner of this picture, is the baseball field. Directly south of that would be the football field, which would also double for boys soccer. Their seasons are fall and spring, so that would work well. That is also contained or housed or encircled by the track facility. Then directly to the west of the football field is the girls' soccer field and softball field. Again, those are played in opposite seasons, so that overlap would work well. And then directly north of that, in the northwestern corner of the project, would be the tennis courts. So we've tried to orient these facilities and fields, one, in respect for what they're going to be used for. Obviously, baseball, softball, that needs to be oriented a certain direction relative to the sun, to make for a safe field condition. But then we've also tried to locate the most noisy, most impactful facility, being the football field, as far from the bulk of the houses as we can, and then put the least impactful, being the tennis courts, as close to the houses as we can. We've done several other things to the site design, try to minimize impact, such as design, try to minimize impact, such as perimeter plantings and buffer yards. So we've got Type-C buffers along the east and west of the property. We've also fully fenced the sports field complex itself. Our lighting program will produce no light pollution. The lighting levels at the property line will fully comply with the city's zoning ordinance and lighting requirements with that. We've also proposed for several buildings that are really accessory or integral to the athletic programs, such as the fieldhouse, some bathrooms, concessions, storage, and batting cages. One important part of this program is that all of our traffic, all of our access, will come from Dejarnet Lane. We do show a connection to Walton, but that would be gated for emergencies only. So none of our patrons, none of our users here, will exit onto Walton Lane. And then inside the program book, we have also outlined how many times a year we think we'll use each field, and we've broken that down by season, fall, summer, spring. And then we've also outlined projected end times for each of those sports. The latest of those, we project being on Friday night with the home football game. We project about six of those a year. That's not saying that we're going to be out there every night using something until 10 o'clock. It is when we do have an event, it could potentially go that long. So this is an intermittent use. It's not like the Sportscom where you have, you know, 10 or 20 teams rotating in and out at night. It's typically going to be one field is used at or have one game per night. And so it's very much a high school facility, not a regional or city facility. As with every project, this project, the access, was very important, and so we spent a lot of time with staff on that, spent a lot of time with our client in developing a plan that works. So as Ms. Smith indicated, we're making improvements along Dejarnet, specifically right-turn lanes into each one of these existing entrances. Phase One, which is shown in blue, would have the first right-turn lane constructed, and then with Phase Four, which is the football field, which is going to be the heaviest traffic, heaviest parking demand, would have its right-turn lane constructed with it as well. In addition, with Phase One, we would build the turnaround or T-intersection at the end of Walton. Again, none of our patrons are going to use that, but it would allow for proper turnaround of service delivery and emergency services at the end of Walton. In addition, at staff's request, we have shown in the red the preserved opportunity for connection in the future for Walton and Ormond Street. The church is retaining the approximate six acres at the north, which is shown to the right in this picture. So they do not have any definitive plans, nor does the school have any definitive plans for that property. And so this is a concept showing that ability is preserved. Since the workshop, we've spent a good amount of time working with staff to develop a transportation demand management plan that outlines all of our commitments to road improvements, outlines how we will handle traffic in large events, and really, it's an effort to show that the school is thinking about how to mitigate those impacts, how to handle those events, and what we will or won't do. And it also gives the staff the ability to come back and say, hey, this is not working appropriately. You need to be doing what you said you would do. And so all that is outlined inside of the book. Again, we have moved all of our required parking to the north side of Dejarnet. That is a mix between what we will construct on our property, what we'll construct on the church's property, and then what the church already has or is in the process of constructing. And then lastly, as Ms. Smith said, on our western entrance, which we think will probably be our primary entrance, it will be our Phase One entrance, we will be widening that to allow for three lanes, which is two entry lanes, to get people off of Dejarnet quicker and faster and smoother. And so we'll be widening that out for the first 250 feet. In addition, we've, we'll realign some of the existing driveways along that path inside the church parking lot to make really our route the primary route on the western entrance. As I mentioned earlier, both the east and the west properties, property lines will have Type-C buffers straight from the city zoning ordinance constructed along their entire stretch, shown in red here. Our entire sports complex, field complex, will be fenced, so you can see that in the red here. That'll be at least a six-foot-tall black chain-link fence. We may go up to a maximum of 10. That will keep our site secure. It'll keep our people on our site and then keep other people out of our field. So it will serve multipurpose. We will also have other fences internal to the property that we've shown here that will be associated and appropriately scaled for their use, such as backstops or tennis court fences, those sorts of things. Lighting plan, we've spent quite a bit of time on the front side of this project, looking at this. We are going to utilize directional LEDs. This is what is currently, I think, being installed at Richard Siegel Soccer Complex up off Cherry. It is also what was utilized in the recently constructed Cedarstone Park in Smyrna. These lights do a very good job at what they're supposed to, which is light the sports fields and keep light off the neighbors. And so those, we, again, our, we have asked for an exception for the height, simply because you can't light a football field or a baseball field with a 16-foot-tall pole, but our lighting values at the property line will comply with the city zoning ordinance. So our architecture, inside the plan development book, we show elevations and renderings for all the buildings that we have planned for this. We've tried to set forth a consistent palette of materials, a consistent theme of design. We know that each one of those will have to be signed and tweaked and adjusted at the site plan level, as Ms. Smith said. We've tried to set forth the standard and the guidelines inside this book. All those buildings will be single stories. We've set that maximum height of 35 feet, which falls right in line with the maximum height in an RS-15. Probably the, I think, the largest and most central building on the project is the fieldhouse. It'll be a central hub of activity. All the building, all the fields are surrounded by this. So this elevation faces back toward our proposed parking lot. You'll see a theme between all the buildings. It'd be a mixture between stone and brick. They've all got sloped roofs, and then we've tried to work in inlays and multiple building planes on each building and each elevation. Some of the uses do make it difficult to integrate glass, you know, if you're throwing a baseball or a football or lifting weights. Sometimes that can be a little difficult, but we have tried to introduce that where we think appropriate. The concession stand is internal to the site, but we tried to bring those same materials and design elements over. Ticket booth, we have planned for two of these, one at each of our parking lots. The storage building is located to the north of the back of the baseball field. So again, same design elements, brick inlays, a limited amount of glass to the top, and then the batting cages is of similar design to that. They're both fairly long buildings, and this is located to the west of the tennis courts. So I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after the public hearing.
I got one big picture question. That sliver of land on the west boundary, is that just somebody else's property? It would, the, I mean, it looks to me like that would act as a pretty big buffer there for a big portion, no?
No.
Up at the top-left corner, the...
Let me get to the...
Just that right there, you can see it real well. This whole big sliver right here.
Talking about here?
Yeah.
So that is somebody else's property. It's, I think it's a church of some kind. I don't remember the name, but it is a, it is a church of some kind that owns that.
I was just curious. All right.
Mr. Lantz, I believe that property is owned by the Destiny Center.
Ah, one other question. Do you happen to know, like, just for my curiosity and thinking through this, what, how big, like Oakland's football stadium, how many people does it hold? Does anybody know?
I do not. I looked at that, but I have no idea how many seats.
Okay. I was just trying to get a frame of reference, really, so it's all right.
Planning Commission, any other questions, comments for Mr. Taylor before we open the public hearing? Everybody's going to find out.
Thank you.
They're checking on the answer to that question, I can tell. All right. We will open this public hearing for the zoning application that we've just discussed. We will ask you to come forward to the podium and state your name and address. Again, reminder to keep your comments to three minutes or less. And yes, sir, been waiting patiently. Thank you so much. Welcome.
My name's Ben Carbonetti. I'm...
I'm sorry, Ben Carbonetti.
Ben Carbonetti.
Carbonetti, okay. Thank you.
Live at 2711 Ormond Street, and I believe that the traffic situation with the school there is a problem right now. So I think having some traffic lights installed or something, because if you're trying to travel on Dejarnet, it is a problem, okay? I don't know what this, the impact of this will be, and as far as students crossing over back and forth, seems to me that that's like asking for a problem. Don't wait until somebody dies before you put a stoplight. The flooding, my property has a sewer line from the street. It floods the back of my property, and I guess it's on the north side of this property. I don't know if anybody can see. Can you pull that up on the screen? Can you guys see where I'm touching this?
Yeah.
I think we can.
Okay, right here, my property's right here, right between these two, well, these two properties here, the water floods back in here. So there's a lot of flooding from Ormond Street. Obviously, this is a dead-end cul-de-sac, and opening this up is something that, when we bought those homes, we didn't anticipate having to have a major thoroughfare go through there. And as far as the football stadium's concerned, I love football, but for six games, seems like Oakland might be out of town six nights, and they can use the Oakland football field that already exists. I don't know that this whole development needs to be put in place, especially the football field. I can't imagine that the noise, that they can control the noise, and the lighting might be something that's mitigated, but obviously, it's going to decrease the property values. So, I mean, if you're going to approve the zoning on the, just this big, you know, Christian academy, I guess you can take some, you know, precautions or the like. I noticed that the, there's no wall along this way for all these homes. The wall is basically to vacant land on the east side of the stadium. I don't know that that's going to do any good. But this area here, this RS-15 in particular, I'd say if you could keep that as a green space, it's going to give these homes all along here the buffer zone that currently exists. And I don't know what the value these homes are going to be, butted up against this complex, but I certainly wouldn't want to buy a home right next to a football field. So with that, I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Carbonetti. Appreciate your patience waiting to come up to speak. Who else would like to speak tonight regarding this item?
My name's Keith Shaver. I live at 571 Dejarnet Lane, and my wife and my property border the east side. We have a long boundary with this project, and I've just got a few technical questions about drainage. That's the overriding issue for us. And is this the proper place to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead and ask your question.
So the, my understanding, the football field is going to be artificial turf. Well, that's 5,000 square yards of artificial turf. So Mr. Taylor and I met a few weeks ago, and I just need clarification on some of these things. Our property has a, it's a natural drain from the Calvary property down to Bear Branch, and my concern is that this project may overload that. Now, Mr. Taylor explained to me that there are some boxes that can be placed under the field to capture the water, and I've just got technical questions about it. How big are these boxes? How much water do they hold when they're full, and we have another one of these 100-year floods? Where's that water going? Who maintains these, these boxes once the property changes hands? Do any of the other fields have artificial turf, or is it just only the football field? So that's really what brings me here tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Shaver. I did not state, and I'll just go ahead and mention now, that we do make note of all the questions that everybody asks during the public hearing, and then at the end of the public hearing, we will do our best to get all the questions answered, either by the Planning Commission, not very likely, staff, most likely, or the developers. So we will get your questions answered. Thank you.
I have heard nothing. My name's William Campbell, 819 Templeton Lane. We built a house there in 1994. I've heard nothing regarding the noise pollution. Now, we can hear the PA system from the Oakland Stadium in our house. Oakland Stadium is at least over a mile and a half away. We can hear the PA system from all the baseball fields at Sportplex and McKnight Fields. I have heard nothing regarding the PA systems, and that's going to be a significant issue as far as I'm concerned. There's no way to buffer that, and I didn't hear any plans for even planting trees for buffer. So I have a major concern about traffic, noise pollution, and again, I'm not convinced about light pollution. Cars have headlights, and they'll be driving right past houses as they go into the property. I just have very real concerns that this is not a practical use in terms of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Campbell. Welcome.
Hello. I'm Tim Durham. I live at 595 Dejarnet Lane. I have the privilege of having Bear Branch in my front yard. The old saying, "Turn around, don't drown," they're about to do that to me, but that's all right. I think what the school has done here is proposing as far as the fencing and the use of the property, I think a lot of this is good. I'm not, I'm not here to oppose that. I didn't hear Matt address, and I talked to Matt on the phone briefly, the overall drainage plan. We all know you're not supposed to put that out more water than what you got, but I haven't seen, I haven't seen that overall plan addressed. I'm kind of a secondary because it'll come through Mr. Shaver, and then it's all going to come to me. That low part that Mr. Shaver mentioned, it kind of drains down, then comes right down close to my driveway. Bear Branch, that whole drainage system has just changed dramatically since, well, Keith's never been there forever, and I've been there since the 80s, but the flooding situation, the volume of water, as development has occurred, has changed. So that's, that's my only concern, is when they do their final plan, is I'd like to, you know, see that drainage, that drainage area there and how they're going to handle that, that water that's going to come my way. But other than that, I think it's a good plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham. Great to see you. Who else?
Good evening. I'm Kristy Atkins, and I live on Ormond Street, which my heart stopped when I heard this is a possible access road. This is a dead end. This is a dead end. At nine o'clock and 10 o'clock at night on our street, kids are playing. They're on their bikes, they're on their skateboards, they're walking with their families. There's a beautiful moon out overhead. That's why they're out there at night. And the thought of the possibility of that ever opening up to hundreds of cars speeding through there, and you know they will speed through there, is absolutely horrifying. And as far as the noise level, as previously, previous speakers said, we can easily hear Oakland. We can hear MTSU, Sportscom, the airport, Memorial, and this is right on top of us. Now, most, everyone is familiar with Realtor.com. It's the site where you can go and look for your next dream home. Well, they did something interesting last year. They added a new feature. It's called a noise indicator. And so when you're looking, and you look at all the pretty pictures, and you read all of the beautiful copy, you can go down and click on the noise and see what they consider the noise level for that particular home. Not the neighborhood, that house on Ormond Street. I am 250 feet away, according to the planning commission, in their notice to me from this project. A neighbor sold his house recently. I got real nosy, and I went and looked at his noise indicator on Realtor.com. He's 100 feet from this project. He's already in the medium range for all this other noise. This is going to put that house off the chart noise-wise. Nothing's gonna buffer that. This project, as great as it sounds, is right on top of us in the Hamptons. It's right on top of Bradford Place. And as far as the traffic, I didn't hear a thing about helping with the situation down at Alexander. You take your life in your own hands when you try to get from Alexander across Dejarnet to Alexander on the other side. I won't even try it. I'm a weenie. I go out the backside, go to Osborne, go up Osborne, hit Memorial, come back down, Dejarnet, to get across five lanes. That's how bad it is there. So I am very much opposed to this because of the noise and because of the traffic. But like I said, it scares me to death, the thought of Ormond Street opening up with those kids out there, and those cars coming flying through there. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins.
Hello. My name is Stephen McGary, and I live at 1173 Gaylord Court. I purchased a home last September. And I would just reiterate what was just said. I moved here last year, obviously didn't see any of this coming, and don't want to sound selfish, but just the value of the homes that are gonna be there, it's definitely gonna hurt. And there are children, which is wonderful, because I came from Sedona, Arizona. We didn't see kids. Everything was old, retirement and everything. So it is wonderful to see children playing and all of that. And I don't want to sound selfish, predicated on that sounds like a wonderful plan, but big, big picture, looking at all the homes around there, they will be affected. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. So I'm not a big fan of the plan predicated on just the values of the home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGary.
Good evening. My name's Alan Parker. I live at 1142 Bayard Avenue on the north side of the site. I appreciate the opportunity to come here tonight to speak for just a moment. Don't want to belabor the things you've already heard tonight. Heard plenty about light pollution, sound pollution, security, and traffic. Those are certainly concerns that I share. I think this is a good thing. I know that space is precious in the center of the city, and so a burgeoning school like PCA certainly is always gonna struggle, you know, for space. But I guess, you know, when I've mentioned that my concerns about particularly sound, I think, you know, there are things that can be done to mitigate that. And so I would ask, and I don't think those things have really been adequately addressed in terms of birmingham. You know, this has been done well, I think, in the city in some cases. If you look over off of Old Askassus right there, where the Kroger is, where it backs up the Garrison Cove, great example of really nice birmingham with good trees, you know, above that. Leland Cypress are equivalent, that are double road or triple road in that area right there, all on the backside of the Kroger, backing right up to a residential area. That is very effective, both for light and for sound. And so I guess I would just ask, you know, both the commission and certainly the, you know, PCA and, you know, Calvary, that to consider that also to be a good neighbor. I mean, I think with these two organizations, if anybody, they would want to be good neighbors, especially to those that are their next-door neighbors. And so anyway, just would ask for some further consideration, you know, regarding those mitigation measures, because I think, you know, certainly this is a good thing for a lot of folks, but it can be negatively, you know, the people they're gonna lose out are the homeowners. And so where it can be mitigated, where, you know, if it does cost a little bit more, if it does take a little longer, we would just ask for that consideration, just because that's the way to be a good neighbor. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Who else?
Yeah, my name's Barry Edwards. I live at 925 Walton Lane. Yeah, we're really opposed to this. We're not opposed to PCA. We think they're a great school. We're not opposed to sports. But like the man who just spoke, I see winners and losers. Winners being PCA, losers being all the people who live around here now. It's a very quiet, nice neighborhood, like all the other neighborhoods in town. We do hear a lot of noise. We hear Oakland High School, we hear the Sportscom, we hear the airport. We don't need any more added noise and lights and traffic. Again, I'm totally for PCA, but not there. I've talked to the people about it. It's like, you guys are busting at the seams. You need to go somewhere else. You need a campus, because you're gonna, you're gonna end up busting at the seams again. This isn't gonna solve your problem. So anyway, I hope that you guys would consider the hundreds and hundreds, several hundred neighbors that live in this area, that this just doesn't get ramrodded through because they want it, but that you would highly consider both sides. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
Good evening. I'm Rosemary Duzer. I live at 1134 Bayard Avenue. That's approximately right behind where the tennis courts would be. And I just wanted to touch on the Ormond Avenue problem. I can't tell if you've taken into consideration the distance between where Ormond would intersect with the, would open up into the new Providence area, and where it would empty onto Osborne Lane. It is not an insignificant distance. You go through several streets, several blocks long, and the traffic going that distance through a residential neighborhood would indeed pose problem for me, the dog walker, and all my neighbors with kids and bicyclists and, because they're all through there all the time. And you need to take that, if you're going to use the, Os, Ormond, I got Osborne and Ormond mixed up. If you're gonna use Ormond as a criteria, that they have to have that in order to do the rezoning, then you need to take a look at that distance to Osborne. And what's going on on the other side of Osborne with regard to traffic? It's just not, it's a significant thing. It's not insignificant. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Who else?
Hello. My name is Chuck Arnett. I live at 924 Walton Lane. I hadn't planned on speaking tonight, but I wanted to go ahead and get my comments on record. I don't oppose this at all. Actually, my property will be facing the proposed soccer and girls' softball field. My wife and I have talked about this at length, and I've also talked to Matt about this and met him out there. The water has been the biggest issue for us because of the low-lying area of that property. I feel like that that will be addressed in all of this, and I am very confident in what they're telling me will work. I know that there's major concerns here for a lot of people. And, you know, I know noise is an issue, but I also hear, unfortunately, I hear sirens going off every 30 minutes. So, I mean, noise is gonna be part of our life in the city. And so I just wanted to say that for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Arnett. Who else would like to speak? Anybody else? Okay. We will close the public hearing, and we will start out asking for any other questions or comments from the planning commission, and also trying to answer a lot of the questions that we heard tonight. So questions before we go through some of these things, or comments from the planning commission?
I might make a comment that might lead to getting a question answered by Matt about the noise. I will, you know, I live in an area that's probably half a mile or so, as the crow flies, maybe. I don't know, maybe a mile, I don't know what the number is, half a mile probably from Seagull High School. Certainly on Friday nights, I hear it. I can hear the cheering, I can hear the drums. And personally, for me, I kinda dig it. We sit on the back porch and lick it, listen to it. I mean, we like it. I mean, it's just, but I recognize, though, that, you know, half a mile might, it might be different at 300 yards, too. You know, I mean, it might be a little different story. So I would like to know what all is going on there. And I would just make a personal comment on this, too, just from my experience with being there when soccer games and football games, and living with my kids at Seagull High School all this time. The PA system does get a little loud sometimes, you know? They crank the music up, and it seems like just whoever's running the box that night decides how loud it can really get. I'd probably want to make sure we had addressed that to some degree, certainly. I mean, I agree with the, you know, what they're saying about that. You know, I'm gonna make this comment, too, and I'm gonna get, try to shut up about this, but I do want to say that during this meeting, listening to the neighbors' comments, and I, trust me when I tell you guys, we're listening to this stuff, and I take it to heart. But there's an overwhelming thing that keeps running through me about what this property could be if it wasn't this. You know, somebody else owns this property, and if you want it to be apartments or townhomes, and you think Ormond Drive might be bad with a football game every Friday night, if it's townhomes or apartments, I can assure you that Ormond Drive will get opened up. And I'm just telling you, this is how this'll work. Ormond Drive will get opened up, and it'll be a whole bunch of houses in here one day, or units, whatever you want to call it. And Walton Drive will also be opened up. There will be no emergency gate at Walton Drive if this is a residential subdivision right here of any sort. I've just watched it happen for seven years. Y'all can nod your heads. I mean, I was surprised to see the gate. When it came up, I pointed at it like that, because it just happens so rare that we actually block off roads for any instance. So I'm, just want to make sure I sort of lay that out there to, you know, there is a part of that that's real. Somebody else owns it. This could be something substantially different than this, in my opinion, that would be substantially more, whatever you want to call it. Maybe not from a noise standpoint, but maybe from a noise standpoint. So that's just, I wanted to say that, because it was just rushing through my mind the whole time of everybody that stood up. I was just like, whoo. You know, a ball field is a pretty soft neighbor for me, just after all what I've seen for seven years up here. Anyway, can we, will you talk about how the noise is? And I will make a comment, too, about the light, by the way, for Mr. Williams. I've been to a new facility that uses those LED lights, and the parking lot is dark. I mean, I'm talking about when you walk up to it, you want lights in the parking lot, because it's dark. And it's a football field. So just for what that's worth, I do have a little bit of just personal experience. I'm not a pro, but for what that's worth.
Thank you, Councilman. And, you know, as far as what we've been able to do with the PA system, I don't know what I'm doing there. So, you know, we do intend to have a PA system, you know, that's part of, you know, a Friday night football game. You know, we've tried to locate as far away as we can. We've even tried to, we added a building, you know. I don't know if there's a lot we can do to mitigate the sound without taking out the PA system, but I think that also negates what we're trying to complete here. And I don't think that's what you're asking. But what I have found is that solid structures and landscape buffers, as Mr., I think it was Harper, I could've wrote his name down wrong, indicated. And so, you know, I think that we could, along that northern property line, we have a building that is probably about half of that property line. I think the parts that aren't building there, we could, you know, commit to a berm and move our landscape into the top of that berm to try to help that. And then, you know, we've got landscape buffers around the rest of the site. I don't know if there's a lot else that we could do, based on my experience for the noise there, Councilman. And I did want to clarify, this plan does not propose connecting to Ormond at all right now. And so, you know, that is a future potential. Matter of fact, Ormond empties into Mr. Shaver's property, who I believe Mr. Shaver plans on allow, I don't think he's farming that himself. I think he plans on letting somebody continue that farm for a very long time. So. So I don't know if that adequately addresses your concern there, Councilman, but that's, it's as honest as I can be. I don't know that I can do much else.
I guess what, frankly, I guess what was in my mind was just, you know, is there some way we could, you know, in the plan book or something, try to have some sort of indication in there that the PA system would be, you know, to some level that is functional, that works. Yes, I mean, whether it's a specific vestibule level, I don't know. I just, I just kinda know I wouldn't want it to be the biggest, baddest PA system you could buy. And then whoever, you know, some high school student who's up there running it is cranking music whenever they decide they want to. I mean, I just, that's the kind of thing that I think I would want to try to, you know, okay, I do recognize that it's an integral part of what we're trying, what you guys are trying to do, but could we put some controls around it, that at least we had some kind of something to fall back on to say, hey, look, you guys can't be cranking that thing at 11:30, you know, on Tuesday night? You know, that kind of stuff, I think, would be helpful.
I'm more than happy to go back and try to work with staff to try to find some way that that can be regulated or controlled and achieve both goals. So I'm happy to do that.
Mr. Lance, I'm no expert in the, in the city's noise ordinance, and I may look towards Mr. Hankins on this, but I don't think that there would be anything in this plan book that would override the city's noise ordinance and that, and that the activities on this property would be subject to compliance with the, with the city's noise ordinance, just as any other property in the city. Mr. Hankins, am I?
Mr. Ballmer, correction on that, actually. Under section 29, 21-109, there's a limited exemption for athletic, musical, or cultural activities by a public or private school between 7:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m.
I stand corrected.
Wow.
Yeah.
I didn't know that either.
I think that is the challenge. I mean, I live in this area, too. But the challenge is, is you do hear Oakland, and you, I mean, we hear it a lot. But I'm okay with it. I'm an Oakland fan, so I'm okay with it. But the reality, not everybody is. Yeah. Not everybody is. I mean, we also have the airport. The airport flies right through almost every one of these neighborhoods, which is creating noise pollution, too. The only thing I would ask is, is that if there's a way to ensure that it's not gonna be louder than what it is today. I think lighting, I'm in agreement. I think directional, it's not something that we're used to seeing, but directional lighting works. I think they can really control the lighting issue.
Yes.
The noise is gonna be the biggest, the biggest thing.
Okay.
I will say, from experience, I live, I mean, I could, I literally can reach out my backyard and touch Blackman High School's football fence, like, literally, it falls down all the time. But I will say, I've never heard it go till 11 o'clock, and I'm in bed by 9:30, strict. So, and I've never heard it keep me up at night. And that would be my biggest concern if I was a landowner in this area. So I hope that eases some concern. And I bought a house knowingly next to Blackman High School. I was already... It was already built when I bought my house. And it's truly not nearly as noisy as most would think. And that's just from my personal experience. I will say about the, is it Ormond with a D? Ormond Lane, it's a public road, right? So, I think that was your point, Councilman. Inevitably, something is gonna open up there. There's really no...
It's stubbed.
Yeah, it's a stub road. It's not a cul-de-sac, right?
Okay. And I know that's, that's a sting to a lot of, a lot of homeowners, and I've seen it happen in neighborhoods with stubbed roads. And people say, well, I thought I lived on a cul-de-sac. I just don't see, you know, if we never allowed roads to get finished, I don't know where we would drive to.
Yeah, and, you know, the biggest argument is gonna be exactly what somebody else said, which was getting across, you know, getting across Alexander. Well, guess what the answer to that is? Extend Ormond to Dejarnet so that you're not, you don't have to go through Alexander, right? I mean, that's why, I mean, but that was why, trust me when I, that's what I'm saying. That's what ultimately would happen with some other potential, or with what Mr. Shaver does.
Mr. Taylor, can you speak on the, I'm familiar with what you were talking about, about the boxes and the subterranean things under the field turf that drain the water?
So, I will, I think that was Mr. Shaver had a couple of those, as well as Mr. Durham. And so, as well as Mr. Arnett. I met Mr. Shaver and Mr. Arnett, tried to meet Mr. Durham, but I think he was a little under the weather at the time to talk about drainage after our neighborhood meeting. And so, during our neighborhood meeting, we talked about, you know, you can look at the plan. There's not a lot of room for above-ground ponds here. We know that's a part of every project that we have. And so, what I explained to them was that, you know, we believe, and our intention is to build every field, the soccer field, the baseball field, the football field, out of artificial turf. And that artificial turf, a key component of that is open grated rock that's below it, which, you know, absorbs water extremely fast. And so, we think that is a good opportunity to act as a stormwater management system. You're spending that money on the turf, so add another foot or two, whatever it takes, of the rock to act as storage capacity there. Then we also talked about underneath the parking lot, you know, we may look at a pervious type system there, whether it be pavers or concrete, or maybe we just go with an underground detention. We're gonna have to do something subsurface. What those sizes are, I can't answer that for Mr. Shaver tonight. That's something we would do with the construction documents and site plan. We would submit those calculations to city engineering, and so they would review it. We went as far to talk to Mr. Shaver, and actually, I talked to Mr. Durham about this on the phone earlier this week, was to, you know, extend a pipe underground across their property to get to Bear Branch so that, you know, it was not a surface flow. And what I described to Mr. Shaver was, I felt like that was a win-win-win, or maybe even a fourth win in there. It helped some of the complaints that you heard from Mr. Arnett in regards to what happens at the end of Walton today. It's actually why we met him out there. When we were out there, the school agreed to go in and reroute some drainage that's, you know, we're not putting water over there, it's water coming onto us, but we're trying to reroute to help him out with our project. And so, and we talked about taking that straight to Bear Branch, so.
Rubber field turf, right? Not old-school carpet turf, right?
Nice, yes. It's basically, I know that Blackman has it. I think maybe Oakland has installed it now. So, that, that is the goal, to provide that all-weather plan surface. You know, they wanna do this once, and they wanna do it right. And, you know, this, one thing I didn't talk about on the phase-in plan was the timing. We think this might be an eight-to-ten-year project. It might happen faster, it might happen slower. It's gonna be very dependent on capital campaigns and donations, you know? You know, right now is probably a good time to be asking for those. You know, a few years from now, it may not be, so I don't have a good answer for that. So, all of these improvements are not gonna pop up overnight. And there will be a very phased approach to this that will get done over a number of years.
Thank you.
And where he asked about maintenance of that would just be?
Yes, ma'am, and thank you for reminding me. Every time we do a site plan and we install any sort of stormwater features, we have to, we have to, the engineers have to come up with a stormwater maintenance plan. That has to be reviewed and approved by the city staff. And then we have to execute and record a stormwater maintenance agreement. That is a standard document that City Legal has put together, that is recorded at the registrar's office. It stays with the land, so, you know, for whatever reason, if PCA sold this, not that that could really happen, but if they sold it, then the next person will be bound to that. And that agreement gives city the ability to come in there and do the maintenance, and force somebody else to do the maintenance, or do the maintenance and backcharge, if I understand correctly, when something's not functioning correctly. Because maintenance on stormwater is a very important feature, and more so whenever it starts to affect other property owners.
Matt, has the contract with Calvary Baptist and the use of the parking lot, is that already, is that a verbal deal? Is that a signed deal? And if it's not, when, when does that happen?
So, we have, all of those terms are outlined inside the buy-sell agreement.
Okay.
I've not seen that, but that, I've assured that all of that has worked out. Same thing with some utility information. Obviously, we're buying this from the church, so they've got a lot of, you know, they already have a good relationship now. And so, the church has been very good to work with. We've had multiple revisions to get to the right design. And so, the shared parking agreement has been an integral part from the get-go, really, here.
Yeah. I would just say that's an integral part of this plan, too.
Absolutely. And, you know, the school does not want to be sending people over to the school on a regular basis. That is a last resort, and so, that's a very important part of what they're gonna do here.
And by the way, we did a little research. It's Oakland's five thousand.
Okay.
So, this is sixteen hundred?
And they bought as many as seven thousand at their stadium, so.
Yeah, so we're talking whatever that is, twenty-five percent.
And just to address Mr. Carbonetti's questions, and that were mainly in regards to traffic problems and the potential need for traffic lights, and I think that is as much in regard to school traffic in general. But I would just like to address that. He was patiently waited to ask all his questions.
Yes, ma'am. So, one thing, Ms. Smith indicated that whenever we submit the site plan for the football field, which is by lar, by far and away the largest traffic generator on this plan, we're gonna do a full-blown traffic study, and that will include the intersection of Alexander and Dejarnet, and then, of course, our access points as well. And so, it will include all those. And typically, whenever there is potential for a signal warrant analysis somewhere, that is included inside the traffic impact study. Now, that study, that could be ten years from now, because that's gonna be the last thing that we build. But again, it's better to do the traffic study closer to time of the project, anyway, because there's gonna be growth, there's gonna be changes. And so, you know, more than likely, I mean, when was the last time you saw a road get less traffic? So, it's better to wait and do that, then.
And I guess, Mr. Blomley, if there is currently traffic problems that maybe are worse than normal, or maybe have some opportunities for improvement just in regard to the general school time traffic, that that would be something that maybe the city would already be in some way looking at, or trying to get them to come up with ways to improve on that, just in general, in the school zones, with that?
Yeah, I think our, our transportation department is constantly looking at those, at those situations. And I think that our transportation department has been, has been an integral part of the review of this, of this plan. And I think they will continue to be, especially with respect to the, to the school zone there. And I'll look over to Mr. Huddleston to see if there's anything that I should add with regards to that. No. They'll, they'll continue to be involved, and they'll, and they will be looking at those opportunities.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, what other questions? I think that pretty much addresses most of the questions we had directed at us during the public hearing comments. What other?
The one question I have is regarding, and I don't know if you know the answer to it, the green space in the back, it's gonna stay under the ownership of Calvary?
It is.
Have they discussed any plans for that?
They've not shared any plans with me. My understanding is that some of this property in the back was donated, maybe even by a church member that's still there. I'm not exactly positive on the history of that, but they, they felt like they could not divest, for lack of a better term, all this property at this time. I think there was maybe a mission or a vision for some of this back here, and, you know, maybe this project helps them achieve or start to enact that. So, as of today, I know of no plan.
I just got one idea as you're talking through this, to see if, I have no idea if it makes sense, but as it relates to the PA, you know, what if you put it on the north end of the stadium and faced it south? You know, or something like that? The northwest corner and faced it out over the stadium to the southeast, or something like that, that would, you know, because noise is clearly, a PA system, a speaker, if you turn it towards you, it's clearly louder than if it's turned away from you, you know?
That makes sense to me. I think...
Yeah, I'm no pro. It wouldn't happen, but...
I'm not either. But I think that we can probably engage, you know, if, okay with you, at the time that the site plan for the football comes in, maybe engage like a sound engineer. There are some of those. We've went out, not personally, but we've engaged those consultants to do sound studies in the past when we were looking at things like racetracks and things like that. And I think that would probably be the appropriate time, because there is, like you all said, there is background noise here. There's other things affecting here, and I think that baseline to study what's there today and what could be there in the future. And I think directional, like you just said, Councilman, is a great idea. And by the time we build that football stadium, you know, there may be different technology that would be more effective at that point, so.
I guess what I, what it would boil down to is, maybe not even at the Planning Commission level, but at the council level, for sure, you know, that, that there would be some, some notation, if nothing else, if you wanna call it a better word for it, some description, something in there in the plan book that is something that we can go back on, that some future council, ten years, or, you know, planning staff, ten years from now, can go back on and say, you know, look, we made it clear, we want you to deal with this. You know, I, I don't want it to just be one of those, hey, we'll do this probably six, eight, ten years from now when it comes up. I wanted, you know, I would want it to be in the plan book. We're gonna do something to mitigate it.
Yes, sir. We will work with staff to figure out the best language for that. I don't, I can't tell you, I know that tonight, but we'll do that.
And I don't either, yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah. What other comments or questions?
And Madam Chair, I just wanted to make sure we had on the record, because I forgot to mention the two exceptions that they are requesting. Mr. Taylor mentioned the eighty-foot-tall lights, or maximum height, which normally could be allowed through our BZA, through their process, for this type of facility. But we wanted to make sure, and it is clearly indicated in the plan book. The second thing, and you may not have seen it last time, I didn't catch it on the first initial staff report, but they're asking for the base of building planting requirements for our architecture, kind of on those interior sides of those buildings, not be required for the particular project, and that is listed in the plan book. And then, I just wanted to point out, as we were mentioning, maybe some additional things in the plan book, those two recommendations regarding the traffic analysis in Phase Four, and the architectural elevations being continued to work on, so that when they're submitted in site plan to be included, that those comments be added to the plan book, so again, it's not lost in the shuffle. And then, if Planning Commission believes that, and I wrote down Mr. Taylor's discussion about the full-blown traffic analysis, that would tie into the Phase Four portion. And then, what I think I heard was the, maybe some language on the PA system, and maybe looking at some more specific details at the site plan process when that project comes forward. But I would suggest that those kind of three items be added to the plan book if it's something that Planning Commission agrees with, so that it's captured in the PND request.
And I do think the suggestion that I believe maybe Mr. Parker made regarding the berms with the trees and climbing on top, it would be good, again, for the noise.
I like it.
The public hearing is closed. Thank you.
Yes, I forgot one of the things. You're doing a traffic analysis. What about those students crossing back and forth there?
Thank you.
It's a people analysis, not traffic.
Even though the public hearing is closed, I think, I think we should address to make sure, because I think we kinda took it for granted. Matt went through it pretty quickly, because we, we, we shifted from the discussion that we had originally in our day meeting about this, and we all had a lot of concerns about the people going back and forth. We shifted from a plan that went from not having enough parking on the north side to having enough parking on the north side, so that that would be mitigated substantially. So, you kinda burned through that, because you guys fixed it.
Yes, sir.
But it's important for him to know that that's fixed. I mean, that that, it's not to say nobody's ever gonna cross the road, but there's sufficient parking. So, that's good enough.
Okay.
All right, what other comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. LaLance, addressing his question.
There are none. I'll make a motion that we approve, subject to all the items that Ms. Smith talked about that would be added to the plan book, including the additional birmingham that Matt committed to with respects, I don't know what, near the homes, I don't know what, is this north?
That's the northeast.
Yeah.
Oh, this was the wrong, this was a different...
Okay.
Northwest side.
Yeah, northwest side, and subject to all staff comments.
Sound mitigation.
Well, that was part of her comments.
Okay.
Okay, you have a motion?
I'm gonna second it.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passed. Thank you very much. All right.
Oh, yeah, they, maybe they don't have to get them. Maybe they don't have to get them.
Moving on, our next item will be an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 2.4 acres located south of South Rutherford Boulevard. James Allen Husky is the applicant. Ms. Smith?
Just trying to scroll to the next slide. I think there's quite a few pages between these two. But this particular annexation request has a companion zoning item. So, there are two separate public hearings and two separate items that would require two separate actions. So, the annexation, if you look at the current site layout, if you are familiar with South Rutherford Boulevard, as shown here on the attached map, there is an existing industrial use Husky Trust Services that owns this piece that fronts onto South Rutherford Boulevard. There is a private rail line that connects to the CSX rail site that is actually in the county, not in the city. And they also own the piece to the south. And so, as looking at some site plan improvements they wanted to do on the main site, we wanted to be able to make sure that that functions as one singular site. So, the annexation before you is a 2.4-acre piece. We did take a look at the general plan of services that we do for all annexations. No party saw any problems with that. The anticipation of it potentially redeveloping from a rail line to a different use with the size of it is probably highly unlikely. But it is a scheduled public hearing, and it is currently zoned RM in the county. So, we will have a zoning application that is simultaneous with this particular annexation request.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Smith. Any questions before we open the public hearing regarding the annexation? We'll open the public hearing on the... We'll open the public hearing on the annexation and plan of services for this particular item. The zoning application will be next. Anyone that would like to come forward to speak regarding the annexation on this item, please come forward.
And just to let you know, the property owner is in the audience, should you have any questions.
Okay. All right. Don't see anybody coming forward, so we'll close the public hearing. Any questions before we have a motion on this annexation and plan of services?
I'll make a motion to approve the annexation.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
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 No.
Just because it was the first one.
Oh, man!
It's just had to be, man.
On the record.
All right, it's an aye.
Oh, okay, okay.
The applicant appreciates that.
Nay. No.
We're approaching the, uh, we've lost it, Mark.
It's only half way through.
That's a trouble.
Okay. We had a motion, a second, and a unanimous approval for an annexation, uh, to approve the annexation petition and plan of services. So our next item will be, item E is the zoning application for approximately 2.4 acres located south of South Rutherford Boulevard to be zoned HI simultaneous with annexation. James Allen Husky is the applicant. Ms. Smith?
Yes, so this is the companion to the opposite project we just looked at. This particular area is general plan designated as a light industrial. However, we are proposing a heavy industrial use because the existing parcels in the area that would be joining this particular one are already zoned HI. So based on that, the staff would be supportive of the zone change to the HI from the RM of the county, because one, the immediate parcels are already zoned HI and the parcel's already developed with a private railroad spur which actively delivers Husky Trust facilities materials. So it does act as a heavy industrial use currently, and we believe it's appropriate because of that. And we would ask that you hold a public hearing and after which formulate a recommendation to the city council regarding such zone change.
Thank you. Okay. We will open the public hearing for this zoning application and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak regarding the zoning. And seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Any questions, comments? If not, we're ready for a motion.
If not, I'll move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Any opposed? That was a vote in favor. I think we once again had a unanimous approval of this item.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. All right, moving on, our next item is a zoning application for approximately 29.1 acres located along Franklin Road to be rezoned from RS 12 and RS 15 to RS 8 and approximately 4.5 acres to be rezoned from RS 15 to CF. Lennar Homes of Tennessee LLC is the developer. And Ms. Rush, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So the project site is approximately 33.61 acres. As indicated in the description, they are asking for commercial zoning to CF along the frontage and to allow for single-family residential RS dash eight, which is 8,000 square foot minimum lot size on the remaining portion to the north. They had indicated that at least, I mean, the zoning ordinance was recently amended that will require that 75% minimum of the house exterior materials will be comprised of brick, stone, or cementitious siding. So that is something that we are excited that would be required as part of this, if the future development. The adjacent zoning and land uses in the area are primarily, it's a mixture of uses, but there are developed with single-family residential to the north. There is tutes to the south and the PCD parcel, residential to the south, and other commercial uses that are existing and planned for in the future along Franklin Road. The future land use map, which is our land use designation for future development, has identified this site as a general commercial development site. What we found over the last several years is that those types of commercial developments are no longer really happening. We're not getting those big box, large commercial centers. So properties that are very deep and far from the main road are really not conducive for commercial any longer. So for the part that is proposed to go to CF, that would be consistent with the land use map. And the portion that's residential, staff recommends that the commission be supportive of that land use map changing to support a residential use back there. Staff does support the requested zone change because they are proposing 8,000 square foot lot size. Single-family detached homes are a need that we have in our city. Again, the minimum of 75% masonry product would be part of that development. Any future development would also include a road connection to Franklin Road extending from Shore Drive. The portion that is proposed for CF is consistent with the land use designation of general commercial. And with that, the applicant is here today to discuss the proposed zoning request. If you have any questions, staff does recommend a discussion of this matter and making a recommendation to the city council in support of the zoning. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rush. Any questions for Ms. Rush?
And Madam Chair, I did, I did just want to add, just for the record, that after the legal notice was published, the applicant came back to us and requested an additional 25 feet of depth to the commercial zoning. We discussed this with our, with our legal counsel, and they said that, that, that addition of 25 feet of extra depth to the commercial was, was just a minimal change and so that we didn't need to re-advertise and that the, that it did not materially reflect or, uh, changed the, the nature of the request. So wanted to let you know that. And what you'll be voting on tonight is the revised exhibit, which has been included in your agenda materials. But I just wanted to state that for the record, um, that, that change that Mr. Gunther and his team had requested.
Is that the difference between the houses that are there and the size of the commercial lot?
I'm sorry?
Is that the difference between the houses that are there and the size of the commercial lot? If you look at the.
See the depth of the, uh, the houses that, that.
Oh, it'd be good.
On Franklin Road.
It's going deeper.
Oh, yeah, so.
It's going deeper than this?
Yeah, so the, I think the, the two lots that are there, that are, that are adjacent to it to the west along Franklin Road, I think those are about 200 feet deep, and the additional 25 feet, which they had originally requested 250, I think they moved up to about 275, 276. And so the exhibit that you have on your screen right now correctly shows the depth of, of the commercial zoning that they want.
With the extra 25 feet?
Correct. Yeah, we, we, we didn't, we didn't get the change from Mr. Gunther in time to re-advertise, but we did get it in time to revise the maps for the Planning Commission agenda.
Maybe you'd be the right person to ask this, just kind of out of curiosity, before we get started, Planning Commission, are there, it almost seems like a lot of these, in this kind of scenario where we got some commercial and some residential, will come in as a, a planned development? Is there any easy, short answer to why it's not a planned development and it's two different bulk zones? Is there, that's just the way they ask for it?
The applicant is a, is a residential developer, not a commercial developer, so their intention is to sell off the property.
Got it.
Somebody who'll develop.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, we'll open the public hearing and ask anybody that would like to speak regarding the zoning application to please come forward.
Yes, my name is Kim Van Hooty. I'm at 4555 Smithy Drive, which is right at the corner of Shore Drive. My concerns would be extending Shore Drive all the way to Franklin Road due to all the traffic that we get from the schools already. Making that go directly to Franklin Road would cause a lot more traffic to come through and go directly through our subdivisions. I'm also concerned about, are the, some of the trees going to be preserved in that area? There are a lot of beautiful, like oak trees and stuff in that area directly behind me. And I also would like to know when they plan on starting the construction directly behind me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice shirt.
Anybody else? Hello, Mr. Gunther?
Yes, Kevin Gunther with Reagan Smith. Thank you for the opportunity to present this project to you this evening. I did want to address some of the things that may have just come up. The connection through for the road is something that the city is requesting. We understand that's just a part of making sure that there's a good network of roads throughout the community and that is just something that is part of the overall road network. It's not something we're necessarily placing as a restriction ourselves. The commercial depth is something that we wanted to make sure after we did a concept plan and kind of looked at the site. We know that we're not at that stage, but we did take that effort to make sure that whatever's left is going to have enough depth for the commercial parcels to develop properly. So that's why we added that additional depth. Existing trees, there may be some existing trees that are preserved on the site. There is some hydrology there that we have to honor. But quite honestly, in a site like this, if you look at the, the typical neighborhoods around it, it's pretty hard to save trees, so I couldn't promise that we would, we would be able to do that. The only place that may happen is if there's some, uh, a wetland area that we have to preserve, then obviously that would not be disturbed. And we'd be happy to answer any other questions. I believe if everything goes well, we'd be starting the project sometime in the summer of 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Gunther. We'll wait and see if we have any other questions. Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak at the public hearing regarding this zoning application? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Any other questions or comments or need any further clarification from Mr. Gunther or any of the staff?
One, on the two additional houses that are left, would you, what, what is that in the future plan map?
Those, those two duplexes to the, to the west along Franklin Road?
Yeah. The only reason I'm asking this is if we believe those are going to be commercial lots, then do we create basically us two lots that aren't conducive to being commercial by not going ahead and making the rest of it commercial?
I was straining out.
Yeah.
Well, those, um, those two duplexes are not a part of this property. They're, they're own.
No, not those.
Okay.
The backs, the back part of them.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying.
Like L shape in the commercial around the duplexes.
And that, that may be a function of how Mr. Gunther has laid out the, the, I know that they have a, they have a conceptual layout for their subdivision. Mr. Gunther, you might, you may be able to better address that in how you intend to use that, that portion, you know, what Mr. Russell is, is referring to.
I think I probably need some clarification. Are we talking about the two lots that would remain next to us that would face?
The back part of those lots is part of your land.
Right. So right now, our residential portion comes to the back of those lots, and we would be putting single-family residences right up to that back property line. What those two properties do, hard for anybody to say. I'm sure that you could develop some type of commercial use on those lots, especially if you combine them. But, you know, that would be a challenge that property owner would have to face with the development of those lots.
Okay.
Mr. Russell, our current future land use map that's currently in use shows those as suburban residential. And I, I do not recollect what our, what our draft future land use map, which is in its very preliminary stages, shows for those parcels right now.
Okay.
Did I answer your question?
It did.
So again, we're, we're talking about the RS eight and, um, so would you mind, again, just confirming for me what, what you said about their, I guess, agreement or willingness to, for some of the restrictions on the, was it brick or, I mean, that they, something about the architectural features?
Actually, that's part of our zoning ordinance that was amended recently. So gratefully, we've gotten that in there. It was something that we had on smaller lot sizes, but with the recent amendment, it did apply as well to 8,000 square foot lot sizes. So it specifically is stated in the ordinance that 75% of all exterior facades for the single-family homes in an RS eight zoning district be comprised of brick, stone, or cementitious siding. And that was added to help minimize any potential for fire damage due to close proximity of houses.
Seventy-five percent. Does it address whether it has to be on the front of the property?
I don't believe it specifies frontage, does it?
All, all four sides, so each, each facade has to be at least 75% brick, stone, or cementitious siding.
All right.
Per side, okay.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay, other questions, comments? Mr. Gunther, did you have something else?
I did want to confirm, Lennar Homes is very much in agreement with that requirement. It's something that they would plan to do regardless of what the zoning requires, so they're very comfortable with that requirement.
Right. Thank you very much. We did close the public hearing. I at least checked off that I closed the public hearing.
I, I do want to make a comment to this lady who came up and talked about extending Shore Drive. I mean, one, one thing that I'll think is important to think through as it relates to what we're kind of looking at right now. The land is already zoned for something, for, for homes to be there. And at whatever point the development happens, that cut through was either going to happen or not happen. And if with all likelihood, with the way that planning staff works to get connectivity and all that kind of stuff, it was going to happen either way. I guess I just kind of want to make sure and say that it's sort of irrespective of this particular zoning. That looks like that was, you know, it is also a stubbed road, um, not a, not a cul-de-sac. But I, hopefully, I would say that as I look through it, because I, I do care about that. These guys up here know that I sort of fuss about those cut-throughs and that kind of thing a lot. But for somebody to come off of 96, to circle all the way through and back around to get to the middle school would be an awful big, you know, loop and a lot of turns to get through there. So hopefully that would cut down the idea of, of people just taking that, taking that route to get in there just because there's a road there. Hopefully, it'll just be a better way for the people on shore to get out to 96, so. So, I don't know, I just want to make sure and kind of mention that, that it probably was coming no matter what, based on the planning.
Mr. Lenz, I would also add there, we're comprehensively looking at all of those parcels right there and planning multiple ways in and out to give people options. We've got, we've reserved right-of-way along the southern side of the apartment complex just to the north, in between the apartments and the assisted living facility on Fortress Boulevard. So eventually, when the Smith property builds out, there will be an access over to Fortress Boulevard. I think when the Smith and the Zacharia property develop, I think we expect there to be a fourth leg to the Rucker Lane Franklin Road intersection at that signalized intersection. So we're actively working with all of the owners there to make sure that there is a, not just haphazard street connections, but a network of streets that will disperse traffic among many different routes in that area, which we think will be beneficial for the existing residents and the future residents.
Any other questions, comments?
If there are none, I'll make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Our next item is an annexation petition and plan of services for the following rights-of-way. Approximately 85 linear feet of Parkwood Drive right-of-way, approximately 140 linear feet of Woodcrest Drive right-of-way, and approximately 100 linear feet of West Ridge Drive right-of-way. The Rutherford County Engineering Department is the applicant. Ms. Rush?
Get a map exhibit up for everybody. It's indicated that this is for annexation of just right-of-way segments. These rights-of-way are in conjunction with the Rivers Edge subdivision and because the proposed lots within subdivision will front and have driveways on these existing right-of-way segments, county engineering has indicated its preference for the subject right-of-ways to be located within the city limits as well. Parkwood Drive, it's approximately 85 linear feet, .10 acre of a section. And then the intersection of West Ridge Drive and Woodcrest Drive is point, a little bit over a quarter of an acre, which includes 140 linear feet of Woodcrest Drive and approximately 100 linear feet of West Ridge Drive. Staff has prepared a plan of services. It was attached to the staff report for the planning commission's review. City services can be provided to the study area. This also will help with any emergency services for these roads to be in the city limits as they, if there are any services that are needed to those driveways. The city had taken this proposal to the...
Ms. Rush, hold on one second. Mr. Gunther, I'm sorry, would you all mind stepping out in the hallway? Thank you, appreciate it so much. Yes, we can.
Absolutely, thank you. So the annexation is for the requested rights-of-way. These were our street segments that are adjacent to the Rivers Edge subdivision, which is being developed within the city of Murfreesboro. They all have along these road segments driveways and frontages onto those roadway segments. So to be consistent with having access to properties that are in the city, we would need to annex these rights-of-way, which will help with our emergency services. The city staff had taken this to the county road board and the county road board had recommended their support of the annexation of these segments. Parkwood Drive is about 85 linear feet and the intersection is of West Ridge Drive and Woodcrest Drive are approximately 140 linear feet of Woodcrest and 100 linear feet of West Ridge. Staff is recommending that the commission open up a public hearing to discuss the petition and plan of services and then make a recommendation for the city council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rush. All right. We will open the public hearing for this annexation petition and plan of services regarding the rights-of-way. Anybody that would like to speak, please come forward.
Dale Jackson, I own that property we're talking about at 1563, 1565 West Ridge.
1563, 1565.
According to the map, the 100 feet, linear feet goes right in front of the duplex there that I own. My question is, if that portion is incorporated into the city, will they be extending the width of Parkwood, I mean, the width of West Ridge Drive? So would it be wider than what it currently is?
Is that your only question?
Yeah, no, also, I know it's coming, Woodcrest Drive is also coming down to meet West Ridge Drive. I'd like to know how wide that road will be and if the right-of-way extends into that property that I own there, how would that mean it would come up into the area, into the yards and the driveways that are already there? And how far would it come? I guess that's about all I wanted to know.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry, sir, which, do you mind showing, which house is the one you're referring to? Can we flip to the screen?
This one, this one right here.
Yeah, you see it's Lamar.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
This area up here will be city now and right in front of that duplex, the road will be a city road now. I just wonder how that affects with the road as the new traffic, there'll be a stub, I understand, over here connecting the new development that's currently underway.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Anybody else that would like to come forward and speak regarding these rights-of-ways?
Good evening, Chris McGuire with Tuttleson Steel. I was just going to address a couple of his comments if now is an appropriate time.
Sure.
Okay. We are making no revisions to right-of-ways, so the properties will not change. And as far as improvements to the intersection, there will be no widening on the south side, on your side. We will be installing a pipe at one point to pick up some of the additional water going forward to try to help drain your front ditch. But we will be adding no pavement on your side, other than potentially some topping just to clean up the improvements and make a good, smooth transition. Yes, sir. Woodcrest coming down into West Ridge will be a 22-foot pavement section and there will be a 22-foot wide pavement section going to the east on West Ridge. In addition to the, to the east, actually going to the proposed development that's been, I believe they're planning already in the county, just to provide connectivity. West Ridge Drive will be extended to the east in order to provide connectivity to the proposed development that's already gone through planning on the east side, but it will not change your right-of-way.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rush.
Did that address all of his questions?
Very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to come forward during the public hearing? Okay, if not, we'll close the public hearing. Any other comments or questions? And if not, we'll be ready for a motion.
Move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Our next item will be an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 123 acres located along Veals Road and Double Springs Road and rights-of-way of approximately 2,400 linear feet of Veals Road and 2,430 linear feet of Double Springs Road. Hall Family Real Estate Partnership is the applicant. Ms. Rush?
Thank you again. The Hall Family Real Estate Partnership is represented by Mr. Matt Taylor of SEC. The subject property is 123 acres and located along the north side of Veals Road and along the west side of Double Springs Road. It is comprised of four parcels. The annexation study also included the rights-of-way of along Veals Road and Double Springs Road, 2,400 linear feet for Veals and 2,430 feet of Double Springs Road. Also, at the September meeting for the Rutherford County Road Board, they also voted to consent annexation for those road right-of-way segments. So approximately about a month after the annexation petition was submitted to the city, the applicant had submitted a PRD zoning request. The PRD zoning request includes a portion of the Hall Family Trust property to the west. They are requesting the PRD to allow for up to about 403 single-family residential units. It would be a mixture of attached and detached. That zoning is not accompanying for this annexation tonight. That will come before you, we estimate, next month. Staff has been working closely with the applicant on the design and getting the program book in good order, so that that would be coming forward shortly. We do anticipate that coming to the next planning commission workshop in a few weeks. The program book or the plan of services for the annexation was completed. We had sent that out to the planning commission yesterday. Do apologize for the delay in getting that information out and hopefully had an opportunity to take a look at it. The property was studied and in its current state, city services can be provided. Sewer for this site is not readily available, so the applicant is going to be pursuing a step system or an individual septic system that would serve this particular future subdivision on this property. The property currently has a single-family residence on it. I believe it is vacant at this time. So for annexation, fire services had made some comments and we provided revised comments for the program book or the plan of services for you this evening. Basically, due to the property's access issues, there is limited opportunity for any fire hydrants or fire flows out there. If access to the house is improved and fire protection is installed, then city fire can provide standard emergency first responder services and ISO Class 1 fire protection can be provided. Alternatively, if the structure is demolished prior to the effective date of the annexation, then that's a moot point. And at this point, we don't know what direction that will go in. We're hoping that the annexation will eventually be married with the re-zoning when it gets to city council, so any issues can be resolved at that time. The planning commission, we are requesting for you to conduct a public hearing on this annexation request and then formulate a recommendation to the city council. And I'm available to answer any questions, as well as other staff are here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rush. I want to make just a comment, just in general for our planning commission tonight, just to make sure I understand and we're all on the same page. We're going to hold a public hearing tonight for this annexation petition and plan of services and we will make a recommendation one way or the other to the city council. I just want to make sure we're all real clear. I don't remember in my time on the planning commission doing this without the companion zoning request going through. So I think it's very important that whatever we do, we make sure that the council understands that we would expect these to end up, as Ms. Rush said, married at one point and going through the council as a companion zoning, so that we don't end up potentially annexing a bunch of land out here that we don't ever...
We don't agree on the zoning.
Have a zoning plan for. So I don't know, but I just...
I may be...
I want to make sure we're...
Is zoning already done next to this?
So, as Ms. Rush mentioned, the property to the west was annexed and zoned and it's owned by the same family and it's, Mr. Taylor's client, Meredith Holmes, has that under contract as well. But it's already in the city limits and zoned RS6, 10, and 12. They're looking to buy all of the Hall Family property for their development. The annexation and the zoning, so the annexation resolution will be crafted such that it will not go into effect until the zoning goes into effect. And since we have a zoning request that's been made, our annexation resolution will be the same as if there was a zoning request with it tonight. So I think it's our goal to marry those up at city council and get them on the same schedule. But regardless, the annexation resolution won't go into effect until the zoning resolution or the zoning ordinance goes into effect. That's our standard practice, so I don't think that that would be an issue, the annexation going into effect without the companion zoning. And I don't necessarily know that that's what the applicants would want either if the zoning is not approved.
I just want to, it's just an unusual circumstance and I want to make sure that we all understand what we're doing.
If I can add, Mr. Blomley is absolutely correct. We don't, we want those things to get back on the same path and the only reason we made the request early for the annexation was because it requires some extra advertising time and we're trying to get to an end-of-the-year goal. I will say, actually, the fire department requirement that Ms. Rush indicated guarantees that neither one of these are going to go into effect until second reading and simultaneous, because we don't want to tear the house down, the existing owners don't want to tear the house down unless we're past the first reading. So we would never even get to a second reading and without both of them being together and the annexation or zoning would not go into effect at that point. I think the fire requirement actually helps solve all of that.
Okay. Questions before we open the public hearing? I just kind of want to get everybody on the same page. All right, we'll open the public hearing, ask for anybody to come forward that would like to speak regarding this annexation and plan of services. We'll close the public hearing. Any other questions, comments, discussion regarding this request?
If there are none, I'll make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Our next item is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance pertaining to Section 13, Plan Development Regulations and Section 24, Overlay District Regulations, Article 6, CCO, City Core Overlay District. City of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant. Ms. Smith, welcome back.
Good evening again. This particular item has no pretty pictures to go with it. It's all about the words, but you may know that this is the third time we've had the discussion on this very active subject for updating our CCO ordinance now that we've been using it for about a year. Planning Commission has started the review back in August, August 4th meeting and then their September 15th meeting. And as we mentioned at the last meeting, we wanted to make sure that we re-noticed this particular meeting for a new public hearing because we also took on the prohibited uses section of the ordinance, which we did not previously anticipate until we found many inconsistencies with our historic bottoms plan and our North Highland Study. As you may recall, the CCO... As you may recall, the C C O section of our zoning code is not a standalone policy, but it's really meant to be used in conjunction with all of the zoning ordinance sections. So, those sections that might be silent are generally explained in other sections of the zoning code. So, it's really to carve out what those exceptions are. You may recall the topic areas that we did look at included accessory apartments, parking provisions, both for residential and commercial being different. I think our last meeting, we may have worked through those, explaining that the potential reductions in onsite parking would only apply to non-residential uses within the C C O, and that the dwellings for townhomes, the only reductions that they may see is if there was available striped on-street parking adjacent to it, that the number of parking stalls that would be required onsite would be one stall for one bedroom, two stalls for two or more. But if it had nothing striped in place, it would require one for each bedroom. So, if you had a three-bedroom unit, it would require three parking stalls. So, those were the differences in the parking. We also discussed open space. How citywide, it's twenty percent. Here in the C C O, we would propose it being fifteen percent, and that would be separate from the formal open space. And formal open space would only be required for developments containing more than eight units on the residential side or more than one and a half units on the commercial side. And we also added some provisions. If it is a smaller complex, that fifty square feet of space be provided for each of the units, so that everybody has some outside private open space. We did discuss heights extensively. Two things that came out of that was currently, the C C O is the only place that we discuss two-story height limitations. Every other residential district shows thirty-five feet by right. So, that's what's written in the code as it's shown today. But there is also still that provision for fifty percent over the adjacent building height, potentially be allowed for residential. But then what we did notice is in our central business district, the underlying zone for non-residential is seventy-five feet. And in some of those other districts, it's higher. So, we thought if we want our downtown to grow over time, that we should look at the underlying district rather than the C C O adjacent building rule for non-residential uses. Then we went into, lastly, the prohibited use section, and really, the track changes of the ordinance pages, I think it's three through about six. You'll see underscored text for various use types that would be prohibited in the C C O, and really, they're predominantly industrial uses. And when you look at our bottom study, which is predominantly industrially-zoned land, that's where it probably has the most impact. However, we did see that if there was a type of artisan manufacturing that was limited to less than three thousand square feet in size, that that probably would be allowed and would probably be appropriate in those particular areas in concert with the plan. So, we did add those provisions where it'll actually state if they're over three thousand square feet for heavier uses, that wouldn't be allowed. So, you wouldn't have like a tannery, you wouldn't have a melting metal shop, those kinds of things, if it was a very large production. So, staff had tried to work very hard to hear what the commission had to state, and what we think that changes will help us to better implement those visions of our various plans, while taking into consideration as we start to grow and expand our downtown and our heart of our city. So, this is a scheduled public hearing. So, we would want to ask that you have a public hearing to take any public testimony, have any questions for staff, further dialogue, we're here, and make a recommendation to city council.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Smith. And we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak on this item.
Only one person left.
All those leadership Rutherford groups out here, I'm telling you. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Just some comments on this very exciting changes to the ordinance and working on all the things for our downtown. I think it's excited about it all.
I'm gonna just tell you guys this beforehand, just real quick. I'm abstaining on this one, probably just because in normal times, I would have tried to make time to get with staff and kind of go through some of these details, and I just haven't had time to do it. But I'll make that happen before council level, so I just want to make sure and tell you all why I didn't want it to come out of the blue or whatever. I fully intend to be in support of it, but there's been some little changes, and I just haven't had a chance to get through it personally. So, didn't want that to come out of left field. I'm just going to abstain, just to make sure I buy myself a little bit of time for that, okay? No, no big deal at all. Just want to make sure I've got a couple of questions answered back in my mind.
Any other comments, questions? Ready for a motion?
All right. I'll move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No abstention.
And one abstention.
Thank you so much, commission.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Great job. All right. Under staff reports and other business, we have one item, at least, that I know of. It's a mandatory referral for installation of irrigation lines in the public right-of-way of Plum Leaf Place in the Mencken Point Development. Mencken Point L L C is the applicant. Mr. Blomley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this is Mr. Taylor's application, but I guess he didn't feel that my presentation was important enough to stick around for, but...
Put it down.
At any rate, this is a mandatory referral for the installation of irrigation lines in the public right-of-way of yet-to-be-constructed Plum Leaf Place in the Mencken Point subdivision, which is located at the corner of Manchester Pike and Dilton Mencken Road. Plum Leaf Place is going to be constructed in the Section two, Phase two portion of the development, which is currently under construction. And the irrigation lines will be installed for the landscaping in the common areas along both sides of Plum Leaf Place. And this is similar to what we have done in, in the Blackman Village subdivision, the Blackman Station subdivision, where the, an applicant, developer, wants to put irrigation, private irrigation lines in the public right-of-way. You can see on the exhibit where Mr. Taylor proposes to put the private irrigation lines for those two common areas, right there at the corner of Dilton Mencken and Plum Leaf. There will be a right-of-way agreement that the applicant will be required to sign, and it's the same thing that Mr. Taylor has had other clients work with, our legal department on getting signed and executed. He's in agreement with that. Our legal department is in agreement with it, and our city engineers had an opportunity to review the request as well. We would recommend that you recommend the approval of this mandatory referral request to the city council. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
If there are none, I'll make a motion that we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any other staff reports or any other business tonight? All right. Thank you all very much. We stand adjourned.
I'm not sure I've seen you silent before, man.